Close main door, stand for placement.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone get a chance to read the last month's minutes?
Yes.
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 Can I get a motion to approve January's minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve January's minutes.
Second.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, new business, Chuck Miller. Do you not hear?
Guess not.
Okay. Uh, Fountain City Forward.
Do I need to go, can I just stand where I am?
Sure.
My name's Carrie Wuzian and I am here representing Fountain City Forward, as you know, is sort of the main street organization for Fountain City. And one of the things that we are, uh, have been charged to do is to do some improvement, community improvement. We have the opportunity to apply for a grant and that grant project, we would like to purchase new light posts for Main Street, decorative light posts for Main Street. Now, we realize that, I think someone said something about some sidewalk projects that were going on on Main Street, no? Well, despite that, it would be great if we could meet with you to make sure that everything is consistent with what the town does and that we have the okay for you, for the town to do this. The problem is, is the grant is due the 29th of February. So is there a time that we could sit down and talk about this project within policies of the town?
It would have to be done public.
Yeah.
Available whenever.
Yeah, I mean, whenever you guys, most generally I'm available.
Please don't worry. I get with it when, do we have to place that in the paper?
Has to be, I have to know 48 hours before, because I have to send a press release, so special meetings have to...
So we will bring back, we will bring up...
You just post it on the door, isn't that how that works?
State code, I have to send a press release to the newspaper at least 48 hours before a special meeting.
So let's, we'll talk about what's best for you guys and then we'll bring together what the requirements for the, um, the grant would be and what we would need with that. Hopefully it's enough that we can pay for something like that, you know, improve Main Street. The other thing is, I think you're aware of the fact that Fountain City Forward would be doing something within, for the Eclipse. One of those would be an art show on the s- six, thank you.
Six.
I'm prepared. Um, on the sixth, so it would be an artisan show on the sixth along with a marketplace, so it would be an art competition. You've probably seen the total clips of the art advertisements on social media. And the second thing is, is we would like, we are going to be doing a five K race. And with that, we will need to talk to the town about having some street closures during that time. So that's the next thing we're bringing to you.
You'd have to talk to Mr. Martin about that.
Is that something that then the town has to approve or is it, you see that?
Didn't we already talk about that?
Well, they asked to use this for their art show. They weren't real, Angie wasn't real sure on the race yet when, when she talked about it last time. Carrie?
And it would just be for a short amount of time, I mean, like an hour is the, you know, after that they quit timing. Anybody who's still on the race, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I, well, it would be two hours, probably two hours maybe.
Enough to close and then...
And actually, it's right now.
They're, they're wanting to ask about some street closing for the five K race.
Five K, just let me know the, the route.
The route, okay.
And what time you're going to do it. Um, I'll make sure I can get some available help, make try to help as much as I can. Um, that's during the Eclipse stuff.
Yes, they closed, yes. It's on the Sunday, the Sunday of.
So you want me that Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday evening.
Sunday evening, okay, just let me know and I'll see what I can do to help. Maybe I get a volunteer to do this about and just let me know the route, so maybe we'll...
Yes.
Come in, I'm in your line, so you see the truck there, just come in and we'll go over Google and do whatever you need to do.
The speedy guy sent us a route, but we need to adjust it because he hasn't started and finishing in the wrong spot, so we have to adjust it.
Well, if we, uh, just look forward to working in collaboration lines with this grant, we can hopefully get it. And it will be something...
Is the route going to go up in town at all?
No, I'm saying, right, in town, in, oh, 27.
Because if it goes out, I'll have to notify, then break.
No, it was in town.
Awesome.
So, do we want to make a motion to let them go ahead and close what streets they need to please close?
Since they don't have, since they don't know...
Since they don't know yet what's going on.
They exact her out, just whatever ones they need to close.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that they can give a carry margin as far as on what streets that they want to have closed.
Hang on a second. Second then, ball in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys have anything else?
So you need, you need 48 hours advertised, so just let me know that date that is okay with you.
Will you guys, Angie let me know what date you guys come up with, because they already said they're okay with whenever. You can message me on Messenger or however you want to do it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Cool.
Uh, the personnel policy.
That I, the two things that I highlighted on it is, um, if you're not going to require the employees to attend meetings anymore, if you're not going to change that back, then we need to eliminate the hours that it states they work on council meeting night. And then the second thing, I talked to the guys about it and they would like to change it back to a 40-hour work week instead of an eight day, eight-hour day for overtime. So that way they can go back to making, working extra, not being forced to use their PTO. So like, right now, if they have to leave an hour early, they can't work half hour later for two days or 15 minutes later for four days or however to make up that hour. They have to use their PTO or lose the hour. With the way it used to be, having 40 hours in a week instead of eight hours in a day, if they had to leave early, they could work extra those four other days to make up for that time, so they get their 40 hours. But the way that it's written now, they can't because anything over eight hours in a day is overtime. So I talked to them and they want to change it back to 40 hours a week and then make it to where a call in is an automatic two hours pay. And my, if they don't have 40 hours, it won't necessarily be overtime, but they still get paid an automatic two hours, even if they aren't here two hours. Of course, if they're more than two hours, then they'll get paid for...
Isn't that already, the two hour call in, isn't that already in there?
Yeah, but the way that it's written now is it's paid at an overtime rate. And if we go back to 40 hours a week, if they don't have their 40 hours in, they'll get paid for two hours, but it won't be automatically overtime. Because like I was, when I was telling them, say you only have 34 hours and you get called in and work five hours or six hours. Can't justify paying two hours overtime and then the other four regular time.
Right.
With, it just, the state board of accounts would probably question that.
Haven't they already come in early in order to leave early, haven't you already done that?
That's just in a day.
Right.
It has to be in the same day. It can't be different days. So if we change it back, if they leave early on Monday, they can work later on Wednesday and make that time up. The way it is now, they can't. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They're forced to use their PTO, like when Walker had to leave to go to his doctor's appointment, he either had to use, he had to use his PTO or lose that, lose that time. The same was when David had to go find out about, had his baby doctor's appointment.
Right.
He either had to lose, use PTO or lose that time.
Right.
Because he couldn't work extra on another day to make up for it. So those are the two things I have. And like I talked to them this morning to make sure that they were okay with it before I even brought it up.
Yeah. So you need a motion for to amend that?
To make those two changes, if you're not going to require them to be at the meetings anymore.
As far as the meeting, I'll make a motion that they don't have to be at the meetings anymore to count towards their 40 hours.
I'll second.
Ball in favor?
I just making a motion to do one of the changes?
Well, as far as that goes, yes, but then as far as the hours go, I mean, they could easily put in 12-hour days and wind up getting a whole, not quite a whole day off, but I'd want to put a cap on how many they could do in a day.
Now, it's not for you to be able to work long days and get a day off.
Right.
That's not what comp time is. And basically that's what that's allowing them to do is go back to using comp time.
Right.
Which Ron used it a lot because of his farming and stuff. He would leave two hours early and then work a half hour over every day to make, get his 40 hours. I mean, I, to me, that's a no-brainer, that, that's not meant for you to be able to work 14 hours for three days and then take it two days off.
Right.
It's better having, I think there's a multiple.
Yeah. I can actually put the term comp time in there, because that's what comp time means.
Right, yeah, I mean, if, like if he had, he has another doctor's appointment, whatever his wife does and he wants to go to it and he has to leave two hours early, I don't have a problem if he works two hours the next day or comes in an hour early and then does an hour early the next day.
Right.
You know, to take it back to that.
Okay, so you want to just change your motion to approve both of the changes?
I'm gonna change my motion to approve both of the motions.
Second?
I'll second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The signing authority resolution?
That I emailed to you all, I did print it, if you didn't get a chance to look at it. And that is just for the Community Crossings Grant to give Shane, myself and Cecil authority to sign documents for that grant.
Can I get a motion to accept the signing authority resolution?
I'll make the motion for the signing of the resolution.
Everybody does, and I just, if you want to do it now, you can.
Can I get a second?
I made a motion on it.
I'll second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Time cards, Cecil, is that you?
That was me, yes, I just, it kind of goes hand in hand with some of the stuff we've already discussed. I was concerned to that, uh, about employees just being able to, they just, they cannot, should not be able to just come in early because they feel like it and then leave early because they feel like it. I want them to have a set time, but of course, you know, like if they have a doctor's appointment, something of that nature, yeah, that's fine, but...
Is it not in the...
It's not technically written anywhere, because like Sean, for whatever reason, he wanted to work different hours and, you're like, but that was his hours every day. He didn't, like, change it just because he felt like changing it, you know what I mean?
I know.
Can I ask a question?
But it's not, I mean, their hours are in the personnel policy, that it's 7:30 to 4:00.
That's what I thought that I saw him in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So what if they come in early, say at 6 o'clock, and then they get a call in at 3:00? Does that count two hours overtime or shouldn't that be just straight paid because they shouldn't be there anyhow? You know what I mean?
If the hours are 7:30 to 4:00, they shouldn't be coming in early at all.
Okay, so as long as they're at that time frame, they don't get paid the extra two hours?
Somebody would be here till 4:00.
If they have a reason that they need to leave early and that's why they came in at 6:00, then...
Well, that's what I'm...
But they would, they, since they have 4...
If somebody calls at 3:00 and they're already off.
Well, all three of them shouldn't be off, one of them, somebody should be able to answer.
Or you just say, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Same worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
That, yeah, that's all, that was my own concern about the time cards.
Good.
And clocking in.
Does the department head's you also, sir?
Yes, it is, you know, per Aubrey's suggestion, um, she thought we should assign a department heads once again. And I think that's something that we should consider doing. And we should think about how we're going to handle that. By the way, how's Steve doing?
I've not heard anything from him.
Last text he said, you know, he said it was gonna be at least two weeks.
So do we want, I'm sorry.
But I don't know if that was eight weeks from when he was released or eight more weeks from the last time.
Because he had, uh, surgery, is correct?
Yeah, um, I can't remember when he sent that text.
So do we want to set that up as a, do that kind of in an executive session or a special session?
I don't know if that would fall under an executive, but we could do a special meeting if you wanted to.
We could actually do it at the same time that when we do theirs, as far as to talk about it
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And give everybody a few days to think about that.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay.
Uh, department reports.
I don't think he sent that, so I'm not sure if he meant eight more weeks or...
Uh, the water department, monthly testing done, backwash 31,000 gallons. Bulk station backflow preventer was checked and set up on, on an annual, I'd say that's an annual test or whatever. Had parts delivered for hydrants we required to have on hand. Fixed old curb tower, set up filter inspection for February 1st. That with the lines to go over lead compliance due in October. Meet and greet with Brian, sales rep for Water Solutions. Uh, meet and greet with Jeff, contact for USG. They do the water tower inspections and maintenance. Uh, fixed the hose, the small hose on the bulk station. Uh, preventative maintenance done on generators for cold weather, meeting with Rex for sewer license. Had repair bands needed on hand, had repair bands needed on hand delivered for possible main breaks.
I think it's the bands that go around up there.
Yeah.
I think that was part of the first thing that he said also, as far as support, no, that was hydrants.
Was that a typo? Kind of, say he had, had repair bands?
So if we have a main break, it's basically a band aid to put over it.
Sure, yeah, it's kind of a, the way that's worked, it's, I don't know. Uh, projects in his to-do list, quote for the sludge, sludge testing, quote for alarm to SCADA running line to water plant. Quote for well tests, quote for hydrant parts already on hand, just needs signed. And quote for the repair bands already on hand, just needs signed. The... Maximum automation proposes, which I guess is the dialer system.
Yep.
For the SCADA system is $5,575. Um, it provides an enclosure, enclosure backplate, the dialer, power adapter and a telephone line. On that. Do we want a, a motion to do that?
I think it would be a good thing to have on there, case it does come out and they automatically get a phone call.
I think that's what we would...
Yeah, that's what we were...
Want to do on the SCADA anyways, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the SCADA alarm system.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Um... The Orpman drilling... Uh, for the flow tests, the cost for the work, including a report with recommendations, is $400 per well for a total of 800. Uh, work will be completed in a couple of hours, once things are set up. If an emergency were to occur during that time, they can easily return to normal operation conditions. So is those, are those due now? Do you know?
I...
No, I don't, I think it's a year.
It's supposed to be done every year and I couldn't find where we have done it last year.
The well test?
I think it's 22.
Yeah.
And I can't find where...
Yeah, it said the last testing was done in 22.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that part.
So, yeah.
And it is an annual maintenance inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's definitely past needs done.
I need to, need a motion to have Orpman go ahead and do the well testing or the flow testing on both wells.
All right. A motion, we, uh, have Orpman take care of the well testing.
Second?
I'll second it.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Uh, got a bill here from Utility Supply. The two, are these bills or these quotes? This says quotes. Hang on a second. Here, don't move.
So I think...
So what he's got underlined and asterisk is what he's got ordered, correct? According to this.
It looks like.
So that's on the one quote.
And these are the parts that they have to have on hand, correct?
Correct.
It looks like what is starred is what we...
Already have.
Have, and we already have the eight-inch clamp.
So he's already ordered this stuff?
I think that was, um, that was in the...
Yeah, that's what it stated on...
A previously approved invoice that last time we ord, approved that stuff from Utility Supply.
Yeah, and yeah, that's what he stated on there, that they already have it on hand, so they've already received it, just need the final approval on it.
Can I get a motion to accept these two invoices from Utility Supply?
I'll make a motion to accept the invoice.
So we're paying this full price here, that's 4,500?
So that's a list of everything.
Plus the 694?
The way I'm taking it.
Yeah.
I'm not understanding, you know, that the asterisk says what we ordered or not.
Well, you would have to subtract what that, what's asterisk from that total, yeah.
Uh, so take those, take everything that's underlined and asterisk off of that total on that one. And then the hydrant one is the same way, right?
Yes.
The two bottom kits have already been paid for?
So...
Hydrant, yes.
The safety repair kit.
4541.
And the bonnet repair kit. So those were already been invo, paid and invoiced?
On the hydrants, it comes up to $567.96.
Okay, so that's 45, I come up with 260620 if I take off these asterisk charges.
Okay.
Yes.
2606...
20. And then the other one...
So take off those two bottoms, on the hydrant stuff, correct?
694, 97, minus...
Which comes up to $567.96.
That doesn't even work out right, if you take the 694.
The two repair kits have already been paid for, correct, Trina?
If you take the 42724 off...
And the 140?
But that says times two.
Okay, so 280...
So if, if you take off the 14072 twice, that's a negative.
You are correct, because the quote he, he put on there as far as times two, as far as what was needed to have two of them on hand. But I think you guys already used one, didn't you?
What is it?
The bonnet repair?
I don't even, I don't know what that is.
Okay. So, but the original quote that he had worked up only had one of them on there. So he highlighted as far as on the hydrants and as far as having two of them. So you would have to take the 42724 and then the 14072, multiply the 147, yeah, 140.72 times two. And then that would be the total of what needs to be paid.
So you take the 14072 off twice?
Add them together, 140.72.
I mean, if you take the total amount of the invoice, you take the 42724 off, the 14072 off twice, that's a negative $13.91.
You are correct, so the original estimate, the, this quote, it only had for one, okay? So if you look at it, it says here one, then there was two of them.
So you gotta add the 14072 to the total.
So you have to turn it around and add.
That's what I was trying to find out, do I take it off once or twice, and I was told twice. So that brings that down to 25681.
So for the hydrants, need $708.68.
So that's a total of like 286301 for the two invoices, if we take off the stuff with the asterisks.
And off the second one for the couplers, um, and the repair clamp, that comes up to 193504.
The what?
On that one, they're marked as each also, but the price on the outside is for two.
For... The unit prices. It goes down two, so you have to down two. Right, so I added up the 952, and there's two of them over there, so this quote should be correct. Because they're $476.04 apiece, which comes up to $952.08.
Mm-huh.
So you take that plus the 84328, plus the 13968, comes up to 193504.
And those have already been, we already have those and paid? Yes.
From what it says, yeah.
Okay. So then that should be the 260620, correct?
I have minus it off of the other total. 2606.3.
So can I get a motion to pay those two, or have him go ahead and order those, the remaining parts that he needs?
I wish him that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the sludge judge set that he has got here, I think he's only got one, doesn't he? That he has got here, I think he's only got one, doesn't he? Is two thirty four ninety five. Oh wait, that's for the sewer department though, isn't it? Hang on, nevermind. Yeah. Uh, the sewer department, uh, discharge January first through January twelfth. Uh, total gallons discharged for December was three point nine three seven million. Um, Scott Door was called, service set up, waiting to hear the date of the service. Uh, set up a new email for the sewer department. Uh, Main Street septic inspections, issues noted, I have documented in spreadsheet. Uh, purchased some copper sulfate from T S C to help with root issues and septics. Uh, Luke Peters was out, pump three ten, Main Street, roots found, spoke with resident, no issues on their end. Roots are growing on top of the tank around the riser, plan of action is being put together to solve the issue. Purchased new battery for the dump truck, uh, winterized all lines at the lagoons. Training with Scott from Alliance over lead and copper. Uh, the twenty third, Scott Door serviced the shop doors, twenty fourth, changed the oil and filler in the dump truck. On the twenty fifth, met with the owner of one oh two apartment building and located septic lids, three in the parking lot behind the building. Uh, cleaned up and organized equipment garage, training with Rex from Alliance over the lagoons. Uh, plan of action put together to get drain fixed at one oh three green, materials are being purchased. With the uh, street paving projects coming up, they're planning to put together a use of the millings. To put out at the lagoons around the, around the lagoons. Instead of having to buy a bunch of gravel. Um, utilized downtime to study for upcoming wastewater test. Uh, things needed, third truck, other than the dump truck. Possibly paid paternity leave, question mark? Dump truck needs serviced, did you just service it?
Uh, no, we need to take it in to actually rechange the oil that needs serviced, that needs tuned up.
It's a diesel.
Filter, like fuel filters.
Fuel filter and air filter.
Um, each side of shop to be insulated. And heated for dump trucks, gets their mowers. Um, spigot replaced at the end of the drive at the lagoons. Hose clamps, hydrant and backhoe to dig old line out this spring.
Do you have any updates on the backup?
Yes, I got, they called me. Last week, one day, the fuel bowl on the bottom, which is glass, when they took it off, it disintegrated and they were trying to find a new one. That was the last I had heard from. Um, on the sludge. Sludge complete set, we discussed this last month, didn't we, about buying these?
It was, yeah, I think it was last month, as far as I go.
December.
Brought up the idea last month. The idea was what I had last month.
Brought up last month.
Um, the actual sludge judge, complete sets, two hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety five cents.
And this is to, cause we sub. The testing out, and with our water operators, Mike and Doug, they can actually train our guys. To where it's normally like eleven hundred, fourteen hundred dollars a year, and if our guys do it. Once we pay for all the equipment needed, then it's gonna just be saving us money.
It'll be a higher cost upfront, but we'll save money in the long run, not having to pay somebody else to do it every year.
So, can I get a motion to go ahead and purchase this slud, sludge judge to complete set?
I'll make a motion to approve the, or to purchase the sludge judge.
And you second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to go along with that, they need a way to get into the middle of the lagoons, they can't do it just from the edges. And they've been looking at some little john boats, I guess you wanna call them. Just a little two seat, little boat, um.
I just swim out there, that'll be alright.
Sewer. Um, it's no.
Yeah.
One we got is a quote for four fifty forty nine, but it, that was when it was on sale. It is five twenty nine ninety nine at T S C. Um, six ninety nine ninety nine at Bash Pro. And Dix is six seventy nine ninety nine.
That's on the T S C.
I make a motion, we go ahead with the T S C.
Is that what we really want, instead of a john boat?
I don't think that they need much, there should be just two of them, right, in that?
I'm just thinking.
I would.
I'm not sure how much equipment they're gonna have in the boat though, so.
What about just a regular aluminum john boats, have you looked at those? Cause I mean, they're a little bit longer, safety wise, as far as tipping over.
Somebody used to pump out lagoons, you want something that's wide. Something that's stable, that when you lean over, it's not gonna wanna tip on you.
Sure.
Trust me, I've been in all of it, so it's, yeah, you want wide.
Yeah, they fall in, they better not come in my office. They already come in the office after they've been in the septic tank, and I'm like, shoot.
Yeah, this is. A Sun Dolphin.
Can you swim?
John boat twelve at T S C is six ninety nine ninety nine.
How long was it?
Uh, it says twelve.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is a longer one, it's wider, a lot more stable than what those.
Even if you guys just came up with a price that we just needed to stay under, I'm sure we could find one within the next couple of weeks. Especially what's still cold.
Now, did you choose those be- because of the price?
Walker picked all those.
Oh, did he? Okay.
This, I think, look at this, the Sun Dolphin, two person, twelve foot john boat at T S C.
I think that would be a lot more safer. Cause it's actually. More like it.
I agree.
A john boat deal.
Yeah, that one you showed Petzravat, I wouldn't wanna get in that. So anybody look on Marketplace?
We still can.
Yeah, you usually wanna, probably might pick it up for two hundred bucks.
Sure.
It don't have to be nice.
Yeah.
And these were, well, by the third plums, all drinkable.
Uh-huh.
So do we wanna set, keep it under?
T S C was cheaper than the others, so I would say whatever T S C's price is, if they get it under that price.
Not the actual john boat was six ninety nine.
Right, yeah, the actual john boat, so as long as they can stay under six ninety nine elsewhere. And I'd be fine with it, cause then you got whores and life jackets, right?
Mm-huh. Although I don't have a quote for those.
I haven't seen those.
Yeah, print them on.
I think those were still in my pile from last month, in my office. But those probably aren't gonna be something that costs enough to have to be voted on.
They could go purchase them, but I think the whores were under a hundred dollars and.
Yeah.
The life jackets were, I think, under thirty five, forty buck for two of them.
So can I get a motion for those, for that?
Buy the boat under six ninety nine.
Buy a john boat under six ninety nine.
I'll make a motion to purchase a john boat under six ninety nine, and to purchase the whores and.
You were both.
Same time.
She couldn't hear you and you couldn't hear her, she started making the motion at the same time, so we got, Lori is making the motion.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, street department, uh, met with Rex from Alliance for wastewater class. Working on studying for wastewater exam, materials to fix the storm drain on Green Street. Uh, started sweeping the streets and getting curbs cleaned up, so they can pan later in the year. Already had two, swept up two dump truck loads, patched several holes around town, need more cold patch. Which.
More than.
Oh.
Never mind, we didn't get that skid yet, that's in there, huh?
Yeah.
I got ahead of myself.
They've got a quote here from Lowe's for sixty three bags, fifty pound bags, nine eighty three forty three. Could we, could we split that? What is that, N V H or whatever, just straight street then, split it there?
It's not, we end up spending that much throughout the year for cold patch, buying just ten bags here and ten bags there. With getting the skid, they get bags a little bit cheaper than just buying ten bags here and ten bags there.
Did you guys happen to look at, do you know if you looked at, uh, Menards?
Uh, I don't think Menards sells the one that we've been buying.
Okay. So can I get a motion to purchase the skid of permanent asphalt repair?
I make motion that we purchase the skid, not a cold patch repair.
Second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, started cleaning up the bottom garage and organizing the signs. Uh, daily drains inspections, used about ten ton of salt during the winter storms. Removed broken table from north shelter at park. Removed fallen tree trunk off of North Street. Um, I got, we got the quote for the full skid of cold patch, need look into purchasing a crack sealer for the road. Uh.
We used to have one of those and we sold it.
Yep. So that was David?
Yep, David and Ron together decided we should sell it because we didn't have the, the personnel that operated it.
Do we know anybody that does crack sealing?
I think you would probably. Cause buying one of those to heat it up.
Mm-huh.
And all that, I think it'd be cheaper to.
Hire somebody?
Hire somebody else out to do it.
Also gotta have a compressor to blow it out.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a bit that goes with it, it's not just that. So. Um, as far as on the streets, have you heard anything on the paving project?
Uh, not anymore, we're, last I'd heard, we were moving along. I know they paid, or emailed Trina today earlier, she said, but she didn't get a chance to look at the emails.
Cause I had asked them as far as to see what the scope of work is.
I know it was the five streets, but North Street was taking off, taken off because it was not signed off on. By Trina about, like, they sent the email like at three thirty, and she had left early that Friday or something.
That was the first go around when we applied for it. And then the state turned around and approved it without their knowledge also.
Right, so I don't.
I wanna know what the scope of work is, cause North Street is the worst street in this town.
I mean, if we have to take, that's what I told Lou the other day, if we have to remove one, something else to get North Street done, that's what I would like to do.
How far it does go? How far is the town length of?
That culver.
I think it's about nine.
That little bridge, that culver?
Nine hundred and twelve feet, something like that, approximately.
Cause I've asked for a scope of work, as far as what's being done, just to make sure that they're not doing any curbs and.
Right, there shouldn't be any curbs out there.
Well, even in towns.
I know.
Because if they're doing curbs also, then that's gonna turn around and take away from.
Right.
Actually getting the streets paved, and that was the whole point, I understand if there's eighty eight, has to be compliant, then that has to be done at that point.
Well, they said something about Main Street curbs.
My curbs on Main Street.
That's the only street, in my opinion, that should have curbs, those curbs on David Street just causes problems.
And once they grind it down, the curbs are gonna be there.
Mm-huh.
You know, so I mean, I'd like to definitely see what the scope of work is that they're doing, because. I think we could get North Street done.
I'll reach out to Lou tomorrow and see if he can get us, figure out what we got going on there. Uh, the police department, three cases drawn, that's three for the year. One felony arrest, one misdemeanor arrest. Uh, all officers are qualified with firearms, attended defensive tactics training at the sheriff's department. Terrell and Carrie are going for K nine certifications February tenth. Uh, firearms. Scheduled for the thirteenth of this month, Carrie?
Yeah, well, that, that changed today, I got an email, so we're going to the twentieth now, I think.
Uh, on the vehicles, the Carrie's truck is due for an oil change. Uh, Terrell come in two weeks ago, the two, not this past weekend, the weekend before.
Last weekend, yeah.
Well, the weekend before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the Explorer, the rear, one of the rear calipers was locked up. Um, Carrie had called me and he had called Wetzel, All Around, A and B and Speedy Pete's. And Speedy Pete was the cheapest, so I told him to go ahead and get it down there to get those, that and parts ordered and going. Before the meeting, and once it got there, Speedy Pete discovered that the rear wheel bearings on both sides were. Were going out and that it's very dangerous to drive, so that'll add another eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty one cents. And requesting that Speedy Pete's for both, for the whole, for the whole job.
I make a motion to have Speedy Pete do it all.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can, can I bring up something real quick?
Yes, sir.
For like general maintenance, oil changes, I think it'd probably be cheaper for me to go. On the auto zone or wherever, buy the oil, the filters, and then guys can change, they change the oil.
Yeah, I think the, like the brakes and stuff, that, that's where it gets a little.
Yeah, but like general maintenance like that, I can give them, hey, can you guys change it, take it back here, get it done real quick and we, we done with it.
I thought you was gonna do that before anyway.
Yeah, but. I, but I'll just need approval to go ahead and buy all the oil that I need and have it back there, cause I think. Two vehicles use the same oil.
Mm-huh.
So.
You're using cobstrop.
And just buy cases, is what you're saying?
Yeah, just buy a couple cases, throw back air and the filters and, and when it's due, just have them, then change it. Right now, I think it costs around seventy two bucks to change the oil for the. The, the Dodge, I think it's like sixty some bucks for the Explorer. So I think we could probably save twenty dollars, twenty five bucks by.
That adds up.
Yeah.
That's fine. Um, Carrie's got a department meeting scheduled for the eleventh with all of his officers to discuss various topics. Is there anything else you have, sir?
That's it for me.
Uh, I have, I asked Wes if he had anything he needed me to bring up tonight, and he said no, so moving on to. Visitors forum. Who wants to be the first one? Anybody?
Mine's short and sweet.
Go for it.
What about recycling? Not necessarily the big dumpster thing like I think you had before, but the individual buckets they put out.
Sure.
Cause I really hate.
There was a gentleman here a couple of months ago that, from Richmond, that they have some grant money, so they're working on it and stuff. But I haven't heard back from him since then, so.
That's why.
But individual recycling ones, it would be an extra charge. And when you take a census of Fountain City, cause either everybody does it or nobody does it. And everybody's not gonna be able to do it.
They said, go ahead.
Uh-huh. Yeah, but that's.
I know what the coffin house we do.
But that's why I've called best way, and the only way they can add it to the contract is if every resident does it, and so it'd be an extra charge on their sanitation, on the bill. And we already know not everybody's gonna like that or agree to that, so that's why we haven't ac, haven't acted on it or tried to push the issue.
Okay, I'm good.
Next? I'll go. So I have some questions I would like every board member to answer. Why did you have the secret meeting? It's on tape, it's obvious you had it. Why did you discuss firing Walker to cover up for Kyle in your meeting? I mean, you did it under tape, it's seen, it's heard, everything that was said. Um, why is Kyle's disciplinary form different than every others? He didn't sign it, it's not dated, it doesn't look official at all, it's got somebody else's name scrolled out on it. Um, how much time did he steal? How much did it cost the town? Well, it didn't cost the town... And has it been paid back? You can answer these all afterwards, I got them written down, so each one can answer. Um, has it been paid back? How many meters did he misread, and how much money did that cost the town? Why wasn't he fired when he had two major write-ups in less than thirty days? Uh, what is the investigation you discussed in your secret meeting? That would be nice to know. Um... The only thing that enters my mind is that we had two employees, one assaulting me, another misreading meters and stealing time. It's obvious you guys have lost control of the employees, who do they answer to? I'm assuming you, according to your email you sent me, you're in charge of the employees.
I didn't send you an email.
Huh?
I never sent you an email.
Oh, you want proof of it? You sent me an email where you told me you were gonna, not to assault, not to, what was it? Attack or sow your employees, how you were gonna lock my box? I get proof of that too. Dude, I got it, I save everything, everything is saved. You're trying to, uh, divi, division in this board is ridiculous. It's like you guys against Mike, instead of working together, you wanna fight. Um, town's turning into trash. Come into town, immediately you see street things over a sidewalk that can be fixed easy, we got this great big mural and trash in front of. It's ridiculous and it should be fixed. You go to the park, you can't even walk your dog because it limbs down. I get it, it's winter time, but it's been nice, and the park's trash. Um, why wouldn't Kyle fire? I really wanna know that, cause it's ridiculous, you had two employees do absolute crazy stuff that would be fired anywhere, and you didn't fire either one of them. So, uh, with that being said, I think you should resign as president. I think you've lost control, I think it's a plot, you don't care anything about making the town better, it's just fight with each other. That's all it is, so, and I got proof of all of those, only had three copies, so... These are my questions, you guys can answer them each in order and not change the subject or just let, just stare at me.
How was the picture of Kyle's disciplinary report get posted on Facebook?
It was in the executive session, so that should've been disclosed information. It's public knowledge, as far as I know. That's not public knowledge. Really? Cause I just came in and got it. I just filled out before we got it. But it was done in an executive session?
Stuff like that, they are public.
I, I understand that, but how did you know that it was what was done in an executive session?
He watched the video.
Cause I watched the video. In an executive session sitting here when we wrote Kyle up? An executive session that wasn't posted?
An executive session is not public.
I can't even get a copy of that executive session, so how did you get a copy?
I'm gonna reveal my sources, what's it matter, it's out there. You did it in a public building?
That right there is...
You walked in that door and you seen where it's at.
He's talking about the illegal meeting, not the executive session.
I'm talking about the illegal meeting when you guys sat here and tried to plot against Walker? To get him fired and give Kyle the raise. You know exactly what I'm talking about, answer the questions. I don't, you guys can say something after whatever, but I want each one of you to read those questions and either answer it or tell us the way you can.
As far as the disciplinary, they do not have to sign them, it is totally up to them as far as whether or not they agree with it or disagree with it, so they do not, they are not required to sign it.
Okay. Why is it different than all the others?
The forms are different, cause the one that I have saved in my computer was the one Aubrey sent me like a couple of years ago, and the other ones are ones that she brought with her to the executive session when they all three got wrote, wrote up at the same time. So that's why the forms are different, and I wrote my name instead of Kyle's name, so that's why it's crossed out.
Okay.
I messed up.
Alright, there's the answer for one.
And yes, it was paid back.
How much was it? I don't remember, Trina, do you remember how?
Four, four point four hours is what he had to pay back.
So that's what he got caught, how many times you do it before? They did get caught. This is a major violation, this isn't something that you just say, oh, slap on the hand. You're done. Yeah, I'm, we're not gonna do this, Mike. Answer the questions! We're not doing it. They're simple questions, answer them and tell me why you're not.
Let, let me answer a couple of questions for you if you don't mind. Um, I will say, as far as that goes, we did talk to the state about how to handle this, and they said, uh, number one... He, he had to at least pay it back, that's what, that was one way we resolved that issue. Uh, another thing that in terms of just firing somebody, uh, our legal counsel previous told us that before we fire somebody, we need to go through a process of warning them or giving them a write-up.
Well, none of that is on that form right there, did you, what did you do? He just paid it back, was there any time off?
And the reason why we gave him a warning is so that we had a paper trail of that.
Is there a...
So that has taken place. But that was take, that, all, all of the disciplinary things that took place, took place in an executive meeting.
Where is it on here that he was wrote up for anything? Where there was a warning given, a verbal warning?
Well, it was in an executive meeting, it just happened this past month. Also, one last thing I'd like to address as far as taking over, you know... Having supervision over each department, that's what I was just talking about earlier about establishing...
I understand, and I appreciate that.
Uh, department heads, and so that's something...
It needs to happen because they answer to nobody.
Yeah, and that's why we're going to do it.
But actually, according to his email, they answer to him, and that's why I think he should resign. They answer to all of us.
Yeah, we're all their bosses.
According to your email, which I will bring, hell, I'll post it on Facebook. They're your employees, that is exactly what you told me. Okay, you're done, so... Is that not what you told me? You're done. Is that not what you told me? Why can't you answer any questions? Why can't you do what I asked you to do, David?
Can I see his questions?
Cause you don't control me!
Well, we also have a time limit, David, so, and we giving you more than that time, that's normal.
I said what I had to say, now you say what you said.
Do you have certified this email or was it on Facebook?
I have a proof of the email, that was sent to me.
Okay, where is it?
It's on my girlfriend's phone, do you want it?
Yes.
Tried to print it out, but I didn't have enough paper. Moving on, who's next? Now that everybody answered his questions.
As far as what I can answer, I did not attend that meeting, as far as that goes, um...
It was not a secret meeting, it was, we stood around and discussed two things after a regular board meeting, like we've done a hundred times with you involved also. So don't be just pointing the finger just because you got up and left that time. That's the one that's on video. They're all on video, so... Oh, well, let's get those together.
It was done to me as well, it had, had, it had been...
Two wrongs going your right, so...
I would like to say something, the difference between sitting around and talking about stuff after a meeting and just talking about stuff is different than that video because y'all made decisions.
Was there a vote taken?
You made a game plan, it doesn't matter. If a vote was taken, you made decisions.
I think you're right, I think so.
You are doing something that's obviously wrong.
I have talked to state... Many a times over this. This is why Aubrey quit.
There we go.
The email she sent said that the town is now undefendable, and that is why she quit. Because she had a game plan when she talked to me, and after she viewed that video, and the decision for the septic tank got changed, she quit. So it doesn't take much common sense to figure out why she quit.
Okay, I'm still waiting on a copy of that meeting. I still have not...
Have you submitted a written request to Carrie for it yet?
It was all over Facebook. It's like Phillips County.
Yeah, you have to fill out a request form, a written request as far as, that's why you're supposed to do things. I filled out mine, I got a copy of it, so on that side of it, ultimately, um, going after an employee is not acceptable. That's been going on for five months, I have told you and told you, you guys can't do that, can't do that, and you guys do it, so...
And we've also told you that you cannot be under direct line of supervision of him, and you...
I am, I am, so as far as nepotism law, it is very clear, I'm not allowed to hire, fire, discipline, give directives as far as that goes. Um, as far...
Are you allowed to make motions to better the water department?
Yes, as far as them purchasing stuff, why not? Because there's two people that's in the water department, so that, that doesn't affect him, I'm not saying, yes, you can do this. But as far as back to the nepotism, so I am allowed to ask questions, cause at the very beginning from when Walker did get hired, cause this is obviously a plot against him. Um, we've had skate problems, we had to get new, we had to get a new skate system because it kept going down.
And your guys, the whole... He, he comes to the town.
Hey, David.
He comes to the town. I'm asking you to leave. Resign.
Hey, David.
I'm asking you to leave.
Why don't we leave? Why do we need to?
Hey, Carrie?
Why, why, why?
So, so anyways...
I'm, because I'm asking you to sit down, cause you're not doing your job. You're not the boss of me, buddy.
Hey, so as far as with the nepotism, so I am allowed to ask questions, I talked with Aubrey, our previous attorney, and she said that, um, you are allowed to ask questions, you're allowed to be updated on what is being done as far as with the water system, the sewer system, or the street department, whatever part that he may be over at that point. I'm not allowed to give him a directive at that point. At one point, when he first got hired on Coffin Days with being cleaned up, him and Kyle were going around and cleaning up the streets, picking up stuff and all that. There was a log that was cut down nine months prior to that, that was sitting behind a car, the people's car. I had taken a picture of it and put Kyle and Walker in there, like, hey, if you guys get a chance, you might wanna see if you can possibly get this out. That is a gray area, because I did not give Walker, or Kyle, a directive that he was in charge of it, the attorney didn't say that I did hit a gray area. I'm aware of all this. I've been aware, I stalked with the state board of accounts, talked with Aubrey, I'm, I'm aware of what the laws are on that side of it, so I'm not out to harden this down in any way as far as lawsuits in any way, shape or form.
But you're setting, you guys are setting yourselves up for a big one. Walker could sue the crap out of you. And where's that, who's gonna defend you? You done, you have, or attorney quit. Bravo, that's a feat I don't think anybody's ever had.
Hey, not, not to cut you off, but we do have time minute, five minutes as far as on that side of it, so, but I appreciate you coming.
Who's next?
I would like to know what her disciplinary is, sorry, for threatening to smack an employee. Um, this is my husband, sorry. This has been very stressful on us, not knowing if he could get fired, because you three are fucking angry at him?
That language is exactly what I'm talking about, that he, that's the way he talks to me, and I do not tolerate that. I don't tolerate it from anyone.
So you threatened to physically assault him, so I'm, I'm asking what your consequences are for that. He's been written up, he signed it, admitting, hey, I'm wrong. So what do you get? You're just allowed to do whatever and threaten people?
I have no contact with him, at, at, at all.
But I, but I think you should have contact with your employee.
At this point, I already have an appointment on Friday. With a lawyer.
Okay.
Because... I am not gonna tolerate the language when he does speak to me, the lies that he has told me, uh, I'm not gonna tolerate it.
Did you write that?
Now granted, I wouldn't smack him upside the head, but...
But you said that.
You said, you said that. Your word, because obviously he lied.
I mean, as, I, I can, can't even begin to be, to even say, how many people would say that if somebody made them that?
I wouldn't, as a higher up, yeah.
If they're a job, yeah. As a professional setting? As an elected official?
On recording, you said. So, that was my question, is what?
Unfortunately, there is nothing on that side of it, so I did report it once Aubrey did quit, I did report it to the something counselor, guidance counselor or something, I did report the meeting on that side of it. Unfortunately, there is a statute of law as far as on a time period, and by the time I got ahold of it, which was, I do not fault Aubrey, cause she had had a death as far as on that side, but there's only three days from the time of the meeting on that side for somebody to have consequences on that side of it. But as far as her actions on her saying that, I'm not aware of anything.
So, so no consequences. The board of no consequences is what we got. You can run through all these spots. You can retire. Oh, you can't.
Are you guys not elected officials? Then you have no recourse. When somebody cusses at you, when somebody uses language you don't like, you have no recourse, you weren't elected official, you have to take it. Now, I'm not saying it's easy, or that it's not gonna, not be hard, but being an elected official, you don't have the right to say that you're not going to take it. When you got elected into the position you're in, you opened yourself up for that.
Thank you for that comment.
And he didn't say that to your face, you overheard him say that to somebody else.
So I have a question.
Actually, he did.
Okay, well, my question's more important, so, um, where are we in the, um, hiring of a new attorney? Has anyone responded to the ad?
Actually, yes.
Yay, great.
She's sitting right there.
Right here.
That's fantastic, nice to meet you here, welcome to Fountain City. Are you learning a lot? I'm so thankful you're here.
Are you sure you want that?
Great, thank you, that was my question.
Work in progress.
Well, look, then we'll let you go now, young lady.
You'd like to hear from me?
Absolutely.
Hi, everyone, I'm Laura Hoff, I'm a partner with Deverberan out of our Muncie office, we have offices in Muncie, Newcastle, West Lafayette, and Fishers. Um, I've been practicing for about eighteen years, sixteen of those in municipal law for a variety of cities, towns, boards, appointed bodies. Um, believe it or not, I've seen situations more volatile than this, and some less, so... There, there are seasons for everything, and, uh, it would be my hope that I could help you make it through some of these issues and come out on the other side, the clean running machine. So, I, I gave a proposal to Mr. Schreier, and we provide a discounted hourly rate to government entities, so that's all spelled out. In that proposal, if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
There'll probably be more questions about that when we actually do the interview process. Not that there's anybody else that was on the interview, but that's just the way that they call it.
Is there a night that works for you to do a quote-unquote interview?
A night that works evening? Are there any specific ones you're looking at?
When you're available. And we have to close that.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours meeting.
Executive sessions and special meetings have to be press release forty-eight hours beforehand, you already know that.
I do know. You can also appoint a committee of two to meet and make that regulation to the board, you don't have to.
Oh, no, I've never heard that. Yeah.
Hire her now. Also, it doesn't have to be bid because it's services.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I do know that.
Did, did any of you guys get a chance to read her proposal by chance?
I did.
I glanced through it.
I did, I mean, I read it.
Did you get a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I asked him to do it, yeah.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do it tonight, or?
No, cause you have to. Forty-eight hours.
Interviews are executive session items. They're closed to the public.
Have you closed the application process a little bit?
Don't really have an application process for lawyers.
So you can just call it done whenever you want. It's just a professional services agreement, yeah. It could be added to your agenda at your convenience, but if you would like to sit and have a public interview, it'd be available on the twenty-first.
What day is that?
A Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
It's seven P M, okay for you.
Do you have a line of attorneys that are waiting to come in? Because I would be like, yes, like, I mean, you need somebody to place yesterday.
Yep. By the way, that's the, we have to do the executive session and.
They all have to not just peruse the agreement, they actually have to read it.
Well, that's true, I heard skin, I heard glands, yeah.
I'm fine with that, you guys wanna settle it up for them?
Okay, I will make sure the press release gets sent in time for the twenty-first at seven P M.
Would you like me to bring any of my other colleagues in our practice department with me if they're available?
So in the past.
Cause we do work as a team, so when we have a couple of different towns meet the same night, you'd like someone other than.
I'm gonna say, if that's.
If they would like to come, that's fine.
Not necessary. It's your choice.
Okay, great. Should we do our meeting at the same night, try to shoot for that same night, like before you meet the third? I, I didn't ask you. It wouldn't be part of the meeting, it would be inconvenient. It wouldn't be, yeah, it would be just a convenience, cause you'll all be meeting already.
Yeah, sure.
And if you're meeting at, what did you say, seven? Seven o'clock. So if you said like, we could be here at five or five-thirty, try to get that out.
Most of us, most of them work, and that's why we do seven o'clock meetings, cause they're, that's what time they're usually able to meet.
What if I rent pizza? I think that might be a violation. I wasn't doing it, I'm just thinking about getting a gift.
Is there anyone else in the visitors?
I have one question that's not related to any of this, does anybody know when the bridge by my house is getting ripped out? It's supposed to be this year, has anybody heard?
Have not heard.
Have not heard.
Like you, it's supposed to be this year.
Yeah, the last thing I heard was they found a historical brick or something in it, and then they just seemed so old.
Yeah, like really built around the last thing I heard.
Anyone else? Can I get approval for, can I get a motion to approve claims and payments?
Make a motion to approve claims and payments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Nice, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.